Uh, fellow board members, uh, or anybody else, don't be blunt. Trying to do what I can here. Uh, so we're gonna call meeting to order. Uh, do we have an adoption of the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion, second in favor, aye. Uh, hearing none, it passes. Other driver pulls the minutes from February 10th.
Uh-huh.
Sir.
Okay, we moved in second and on favor, aye, hearing no pose, that passes. Alright, we're gonna move right into discussion of our agenda. We're gonna start with Goalbook. Who is gonna be talking about Goalbook?
Good afternoon, I can hear that they're on time this evening. Uh, Goalbook is an online tool that helps-
Can you make sure that the microphone's on? There you go.
Okay, Goalbook is an online tool that helps educators create individual learning goals and instructional plans. It's designed to help teachers improve the quality of their individual education plans, the IEPs, and effectiveness. And it's not just for teachers, also for related service providers as well to use. Uh, in your executive summary, you see the services that are offered, they are providing assessment and a present level of performance tool to help identify regression and urgent needs, which is really needed in the high schools because, you know, once you get to high school, you're not doing all those Google testsings and different things like that to see where the children, where the students are currently. But it has a built-in assessment component in it as well as a tool to help identify what, um, regression and recruitment. It also supports the development of skills based on standard-aligned IEP goals, so they're aligned with state standards, which is a wonderful tool, and it has classroom-ready resources and strategies to support. A lot of the parishes moved to this a long time ago, like Lincoln, Auburnville, Rapids, Iberia, and other parishes, to help them after a best review with LDLE, um, the program managers and myself and the team got together and realized that we need to support as well with our teachers. It's hard to find certified reg ed teachers, just trying to find, especially the certified teachers. So, in order to build their capacity and to help them, this program will be a great benefit for our district. Uh, some of the results, like in Auburnville Parish, was that students grew academically. Uh, students with disabilities growth increased on the state assessment in math and, uh, ELA. Also, uh, some of their schools were removed from being a UIR school or a label school, and it's helped build the collaboration with reg ed and special ed teachers to teach those, uh, curriculum and standards that students need.
Got a question, speaking of special ed IEPs, a kid comes in, child from another system. Um, it's my understanding if they had their last, uh, IEP done in the beginning of the year, they transferred into our system, oftentimes that IEP is sometimes pushed back toward the end year to where sometimes if that's the case, if you have a special ed teacher that has a number of special ed children, then they may have a lot of IEPs that are coming due April, May, whatever. Is there any way that you can spread that out over the course of the year?
Uh, we can always do, uh, IEP upon request of a parent, IEP review, and then we'll change the date of the IEP.
Okay.
So it can be changed.
It can be changed, yes.
Okay. What is, what are we using now to address the services that this particular vendor offers?
Right now, we're using, um, we're using just the capacity of the teachers that we have right now and the program managers and ourselves. So we are basing our goals, it's been like that for probably a decade now, on the Louisiana standards. Uh, and we write goals based on that. We have used Baby's, um, educational group to help us with this, as well as Dr. Ross with LDLE, with the monitoring assessment tool. And based on their, uh, communication and our collaboration with them, they also recommend that we use Goalbook.
So, but I guess my question is, are we using any kind of software program, any kind of program that we do?
No.
This is the, we've been using pen and paper.
Yes.
Um, okay, one of the things I really like about this is, uh, that Goalbook is, it has a heavy focus on those students with disabilities, which, which are, to me, the true IEPs. I know we use IEPs for other reasons, give to town, so those kinds of things.
Right.
Um, one of the things that has, that I've had multiple community members, as well as agent, other external agencies criticize, not just our system, but schools in general, is, um, the lack of personalized IEP focus and actual disability interventions, or interventions for students with disabilities, I should say. Um, do you think that this is gonna increase our capacity to provide that?
I think it's gonna increase our capacity most definitely, and with those plans being individualized and tailored for the, tailored to those students individually. Right now, we're using pen and paper and, um, we are, um, using kind of like a blanket type of situation. And so, um, that's why we look at this to see what we can do to help our department grow and to serve those children, correct? And this is the answer. It may feel this is the answer.
Sure. Uh, one more question, does, does this offer, uh, potential interventions so you can say, I have got a kid who's struggling with non-verbal, uh, does Goalbook help you reach, identify potential-
It does, and it has, um, it also has helped fire a teacher with class-ready resources and strategies for them to use as well. And the good thing about it has ongoing professional development for our teachers.
I noticed that too. Um, and I noticed two things in here. It said, uh, it has the one-year price, but then there was another sheet that said three years. Are we engaging for three years? We're engaging for one?
We're engaged for three.
For three, okay. So, cause, so just, uh, committee members, just take note, it's a little over sixty-six thousand per year. Um, I mean, I know this is based on recommendations. Superintendent Moore, do you think it's wise for us to take on a new program and sign a contract for three years? Is there a reason we can't do it year by year?
Well, if you look in the paper, I'm sorry. If you look in some of the paperwork that we sent, like in our here repairs, you know, year one is a focus. I mean, year two, you really wanna see what you want to see, uh, to multiple years. You know, we're gonna implement each part of it, but they really didn't see that growth, probably, yeah, if they had a year one, year two, and year three, if you'll look in the packet.
So what kind of due diligence have y'all done in terms of these other school systems, you mentioned like, it's about those local ones? In terms of talking with their group to see if they had success, if so, what was it, and then what could be improved? If I had opportunity to do that?
We talked with, um, most, we're in a group called LUCIA, and in LUCIA, uh, we always have these conversations about Goalbook. And well, different things, we especially at the state of Louisiana, this Louisiana Professional Education Association. And, um, we've looked at all of them with success. I think I put one in here, I didn't put them all in here. Um, this shows that for the result, two schools that were labeled by the state as urgent intervention required, improved. One school had the label removed entirely, the others have been raised to a less intense label, and the communication between special ed and education, general education teachers supporting students with special ed design instruction has increased. Sorry.
Well, I just, I just didn't know if we talked to some of the systems.
Yeah.
Yes, 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 and we need, um-
The top of that question, yeah.
Okay.
You look like often you, uh, you get a discount.
For three years, yes.
Sixty-six.
How'd you announce it? Yes.
I was just gonna ask, well, this amount of three years, we've been trying to hold an hour contract in format for a year. Uh, now, I, I understand the explanation, Dylan, I'm sorry, I understand the explanation, Dylan.
I just wanna be clear about what, what the board's expectations are about this because this will be a slight departure from what we've been trying to do, so just so y'all think about that.
Did you have, did you look over this contract?
It's not much of a contract ad written, so it's gonna need to be formed.
Now, what I see, and, and that's what I would say, is that we have to have our attorney, regardless of how big or how small, to make sure, because all contracts that come from organizations are a benefit of the organization, not us. Um, but what it looks like, just from my cursory view of this, is that we do have the option to not renew as long as notice is given within before, more than thirty days prior to renewal. So if you could, please take a look at that, Mr. Lawrence, and if that is indeed the case, then I have no problem agreeing to those three years, knowing that there will be review.
Years, days of laws.
And that needs to be brought to us, uh, sixty days prior to renewal to say we do intend to continue this. Um, and again, this needs to go on that list of all these contract renewals. I still haven't seen, uh, you know, that, that, uh, calendar of what renewals we have each month as a board and as a district, what we're looking at to make sure we're staying on top of things and, you know, being fiscally responsible is really one. We wanna make sure we're getting our money's worth, you know, if you, you get into this and for some reason something better pops up, because, you know, stuff's always evolving.
Right.
You wanna have the option to get out of it too and move on to something better. Cause sixty-six thousand, seventy thousand, that's, that's no small job to achieve, I mean, it's, it's a lot of money in my pocket if it were mine, so, uh, wanna make sure of being fiscally responsible, but I, I have, I, I like to see us making advancement in the IEP world, so I appreciate that. Committee, do you have any, uh, discussing?
I was just going to ask, I understand them coming in and doing that, IEP, seeing it all differently, but will our teachers be trained in how to do this prior to the next school year? As a group?
Yes. We're, we're hopeful to bring them in throughout the summer and use this, and maybe even start if this is approved, um, in the month of May.
And that's part of the contract that they are gonna provide to train you.
Like, you know, just making sure that all of them get there and-
And the general views, not to speak for you, but the general views say this is very intuitive, it's a very user-friendly programming as well. Um, so of course, we like that when we know that when you go on and look at, like, the, like, the, the teachers are giving reviews and saying this is really intuitive, this is a good program, so kind of those independent reviews, not ones that Goalbook gave us, I went and looked at, what are people saying about it, and they like it.
Yeah, I saw that too. Well, thrilled that you were addressing, you know, special ed, because that is an area I think that we're weak. Will you address through that, doing the IEPs, will the teachers be able to address autism, um, a different need that someone have? Maybe they're dyslexic, will that be, uh, pointed out?
Uh, we, we are planning, uh, professional development for our teachers in all areas.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion from, okay, uh, what is the motion for your name? Approval, send to the, uh, larger board for approval?
Yes.
We need, okay, alright, so it's a move and seconded, sent to larger board for approval, on favor, aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, uh, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to Frog Street Press, pre.
Alright, good afternoon, board members. Um, the need for adoption for, um, Frog Street, uh, right now, current curriculum is BDA 3K. The issue with BDA 3K, it was discontinued in December of twenty-twenty, and we are in year twenty-twenty-five. It's not a tier-one curriculum, it is not aligned with the science of reading and their, our limited, um, instructional support for our ELL learners. Um, LDLE recently adopted or updated rather the pre-K standards, so we need a curriculum that is aligned with those pre-K standards. Um, overview of Frog Street, I'm not going to read all of this to you, but Frog Street is rated tier-one through LDLE. It is aligned with the science of reading and it has dual language support for our ELL learners. Uh, it's research-based, everything is embedded in the program, the reading, the math, the science, all of that. Um, what I just said, um, there's the view of what the, um, teacher manuals would look like. Everything is an all-stop shop. This is the kit that, uh, teachers will receive upon approval. Everything that they need to teach the Frog Street curriculum comes in their box.
Is that gonna be one box per teacher or per school?
One box per teacher. That is one classroom.
Okay.
Um, we had a stakeholders meeting, a virtual meeting on March seventeenth. Uh, this information was shared with all of the elementary principals, from there, the elementary principals shared the Zoom link to all pre-K teachers, and they were allowed or asked to get on a Zoom meeting to participate and see what the Frog Street, um, program is about, because we need their body in. Um, fortunately, a representative from each campus, uh, attended the virtual meeting, and based on the survey or the feedback data that they gave, everyone is excited about the Frog Street, um, the potential adoption of the Frog Street curriculum. Um, they're satisfied, they had know their overall rating, if you look at it, uh, sixty-six percent were very satisfied, thirty-three percent were satisfied, no one said that they were dissatisfied with the, um, potential adoption of Frog Street curriculum. I listed some, um, feedback responses from, uh, faculty members and staff members from each campus. Again, I'm not gonna bore you with that, but they are excited about the potential adoption of this curriculum. And unfortunately, pre-K is often one of the overlooked subjects of grade areas, so they are excited for this new adoption. Um, for implementation support, before the start of the school year, we will offer improved onsite professional development for our pre-K teachers, parent professionals, and school leaders, and during the school year, we will offer ongoing, um, support at each school site as need, based on whatever their, uh, individual needs are. Um, Louisiana, here are a list of some parishes that have already adopted the Frog Street, uh, curriculum for pre-K, and these links are additional information if you just would like to look at, um, the curriculum in writing detail.
So these are age-appropriate and not, uh, we're, we're very confident that there's not curriculum that fits into rounds that-
It's LDLE-approved.
Okay.
LDLE-approved.
Yes.
LDLE-approved.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, did, uh, so, what did you find when you looked at the other tier-one curriculums for pre-K?
Unfortunately, there are not a lot of tier-one curriculums for pre-K, uh, that are currently rated tier-one by LDLE.
From, um, what I saw, there are three others that are tier-one.
In comparison to like, uh, kindergarten and first grade is what I mean, with the, uh, the vast amount. With the other curriculums, a lot of the, um, subject matter, like for instance Frog Street, everything is embedded, the science, the math, the, uh, phonics, but the other curriculums, they were lacking in some of those areas. Another thing, we have some ELL students, those curriculums didn't address that.
ELL.
English-like learners.
Thank you, okay. I'm used to, like, second, as a second, I'm used to ESL, okay, thank you.
Um, and it also has, um, this Frog Street curriculum has the, um, social and emotional learning that's becoming a D focus.
Okay. Um, any other questions?
Quick question, Madam President, in these various packages, I'm, I'm trying to listen to see, is there any data exchanges going on? Or uploading student data?
Mister Lawrence, yes, so, data collection, is Frog Street collecting any data on our students?
From what the information I have know, and I know we have some, um, um, contract, uh, system in place that if we have, that the, um, company has to sign a data sharing agreement with the issue.
Okay, and again, this would be a contract, we have to have Mister Lawrence take a look at. One other question, I, you know, our former superintendent used to always say that, uh, pre-K is not necessary, it's an unfunded program, um, all, all of these things, and I, I know as we're looking at national cuts in head start, pre-K is gonna be even more important, um, if that is to take place. Uh, but just wanna check on our, our budgets, uh, in terms of what we have available for. Do we have budget money for pre-K specifically?
Pre-K is, is managed.
We get, um, AG funds for pre-K, we also get LA four funds for pre-K, and then some of our pre-K programs is funded through type.
Thank you.
It's not, it's not, I don't, I don't think it's, you know, I can speak to him, it's not, it's not, it's not mandated by the state. I don't understand it at all.
Which is very strange, that's where my, my mind is at, how do we have a tier-one approved when it's not even mandated by the state? It's very strange, uh, a thing, and that's basically what I'm thinking out there, but, uh, and have we, so you, we did have Kirk Henry said, but that no longer was tier-one as a five-year program.
It's no longer tier-one, and the issue, the, the primary issue, if I needed to order a teacher's label, they don't credit even here. So we have to go with something.
Mister Moore, I can answer your question. Did you guys pre-K? Neither did I. We didn't have it, we hadn't grown up, so a lot of schools are over college, you have it, but maybe they would have taken it. Maybe not, so we have evolved, and it's become a lot more important. That might, that might have something to do with it.
Um, that was a lost.
And the children's coalition has also promoted the use of Frog Street and relates to their head start and all early learning. So this is kind of just low lightnings with they, with those students that's being head start and those primary, um-
Great.
Yeah, through this, this is kind of low lightnings.
That was gonna be my question, um, in terms of, uh, so, you know, a lot of these curriculum we give, when we, we purchase them and, you know, get some shiny toys that beginning that year, are we gonna give, do they give you purchases every year?
No. The manuals, I mean, if you have time to go and get it, the manual status says, um, anything that they need credit is available online through the teacher portal, um, the home connection letters. Good afternoon, parents, this week we're talking about, everything is available online through the portal. And everything that the teachers need to teach, whether they're sound cards, letters, manipulatives, is all in the kit.
So they, if they get worn out after a year, which these little kids, we have to order new, new things?
Well, the manipulatives, like, and you won't have to destroy those.
Yeah.
But as far as like the teacher names, they're very sturdy, I don't see that happening.
Yeah, I'm not worried about teacher names.
Yes, but as far as the kids and what they use, no.
Yes.
Okay, alright, do we have any, um, questions or motions?
For approval, we need to, uh, not six, yeah.
Okay, motion made by Mister Wilson, second by Mister Berry, all in favor, aye. Hearing none opposed, the motion carries, thank you very much. We're going to move on to Go Sign Me Up.
Alright, so Go Sign Me Up is a, uh, professional development management system, it's an online platform. The reason we need to adopt this right now, whenever we have PD, we have no system, no way that participants can preregister for sessions at all. When we get to the PD, we are literally signing in by paper. The issue with that is, if we have a big PD session with a hundred, a hundred and fifty people, we are in a line, signing in by hand. Um, additionally, we have no way to track, um, PD hours or to see those new hours that the teachers are, um, getting. Lastly, um, there are communication barriers, so for, sometimes, I mean, when we have PD, especially back-to-school PD, there may be a location change, or a session may be canceled. We have no way right now of quickly sending out that information or those updates, and Go Sign Me Up will allow us to do that. Um, it's a comprehensive, um, development, professional development system. It allows participants to literally go online, sign up for a session ahead of time. It tracks their attendance, it tracks whether or not they completed the session, and it is also, um, gives a survey at the end that allows the teachers or the parent professionals or the school leaders to say, hey, yes, this session was effective, no, it was not effective. Um, this is an example of what St. Henry Parish has, it's literally like the teachers are shopping online. It will be a link added to the, um, Monroe City School page if approved, and the teachers can literally go in, see the session title, see a quick summary of the session, and whether or not they would like to attend. They will click it and they will automatically enroll into the PD session. If there, um, we can also put a number of seats in a session. A lot of times when we go to PD, the PD is a very popular PD, so there may be twenty-five seats in that session when fifty people show up, so now we have a seating issue. This will allow us to put twenty-five seats, and once they're, they're taking, those teachers, parent professionals, whoever, they're gonna wait this, and as, um, attendance is canceled, they will enroll in the class.
What's the cost of this software?
Uh, worth it, uh, ten, ten thousand. Um, it also allows us to send all the, um, confirmations, updates, all of that, as I said earlier, and it also allows us to, um, issue certificates for completion. At the district level, we can track who attended what class, who canceled the session, um, we can do it by district, by school site, by particular grade band, all of that. It allows us to see, hey, um, three-dimensional learning for science is a very popular session. We may need to create another PD course for this. Again, it allows the district level to report, um, to analyze everything that's going on with PD right now. In my office, and I know quite in everyone else's office, we have stacks on stacks on top of stacks of paper with PD signings. That's all we have to manage the system, is just signing in.
How do they sign in then, when they do show up for their paperwork? No, I mean, how will they with this?
Oh, it's literally online, so once they get there, the, the teacher gets there, they will have a QR code that presents it and it walks straight in.
And the scanner comes with this program?
Yes, everything is embedded in the program.
And this can't be done with the Goalbook program, I saw, because I know there's some professional development in your Goalbook program.
I don't think it's the same. Goalbook offers professional development opportunities for teachers, parent professionals, and special education teachers to attend to learn more about Goalbook. This particular platform is allowing us, when we have professional development, for teachers to sign in, for us to be able to verify and say, yes, you did come to the goal to study. It also allows the whole people accountable to say, we offered it on this day, you showed up, this is what time you showed up. You showed up an hour late, or an hour and a half, PD, it, it gives us those checks and balances at the district level, and you don't have any of that right now. Um-
No signing in at the beginning, and leaving out, you don't see it anymore.
Yes, yes, that's another issue, they'll sign in and leave.
Alright, don't they still need that?
But this, they have a QR code to sign out, so you have to be there at the beginning and at the end to actually get the certificate.
Oh, they weren't having to sign out, yeah.
I mean, you have a friend, you're friends.
Yeah, you're a friend, right?
It's all.
Yep.
Um, St. Henry Parish is using, also St. Mary, I have linked additional videos if you are interested in.
Seven-nine-four-forty, three years. Any other questions? Man, look, anything that gets us moving on to dark ages, I appreciate it, I just wanna make sure that we're- Okay, I wanna make sure that we're getting the biggest bang for our money. Okay, we've got a motion from Mister Berry, second from Mister Wilson, all in favor, aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, to be brought to board. Um, okay, we're gonna move on to item D, Body Bridges Civics Program, and for, uh, uh, go ahead and, uh, run us by, because I know Body Bridges came before us before, so if you can give us background on that and then where I'm seeing this now.
Alright, good afternoon, everyone. I am here to discuss the, uh, Body Bridges subject. We've already adopted Body Bridges with the tier-one curriculum. They have been, uh, waiting, we have, we've all been, they just been waiting on the civics to come out, for the rollout civics, and we're just gonna do that course, and why I'm here today is just to update the committee that the first units of, uh, the civics curriculum is gonna be rolled out, being rolled out. We just have to get it and then, uh, train our teachers. The teachers are already aware of this, we've already had a PD session with them to go over what it's gonna look like so that they can see, um, the different things that the new curriculum's gonna offer. Uh, and then whenever we actually get the materials in, then we'll have another PD before school starts so that they'll have opportunity to plan, prepare for the start of school. Um, these new materials are gonna, eventually Body Bridges has actually realized that those little paperback readers are not as durable as they would like them to be, and so they're, they're trying to push that hardback version snail. And they're also, for the second year, going to provide student activity books, which we've been creating our own, uh, in the past, and so we're never gonna have that available to us as well. So this is mainly just in that base to let you all know that the units are beginning to roll out, and as we, they roll those out, we'll be getting those and getting those into the schools. Um, these units are coming, of course, with the, with the student volumes. It comes with the teacher's guide, with instructional slides, it comes with assessments, it comes with, uh, document-based questions, and it comes with, uh, all the re, uh, instructional slides that the teachers are able to, uh, edit themselves and use. And so, there's gonna be, um, background knowledge for the teachers, it's a new teacher, it's called What Teachers Need to Know, um, which I've looked at those examples of that, and they're very, very good. Um, it's also, the new curriculum for civics is giving you opportunities for different levels of reading, so it's, we're able to do some interventions built into that, whether it be individual independent reading, or partner reading, or group reading, so they're truly putting emphasis on that, uh, that aspect of the curriculum. Um, and it is, of course, matches with our lax adoption of our social studies standards, and, um, like I say, this is just continuation of what we've already been offering in our schools. Any questions?
I have a question, um, if we have an instance where we have, um, a long-term sub taking over- I have a question, um, if we have an instance where we have, um, a long-term sub taking over a civics class, does this type of curriculum allow the sub to pick up and actually teach?
It would, the, it's, it's not quite as stricted as, as people like to take that it is, but there's enough information there, especially with this one, the teacher base needs to know ahead of time, and the ease of the slides, um, that are there, that are available to them, uh, and then the activities that, and they're, they're little, if the teacher's guide, there are little things, little arrows and little things that point out, little things that are highlighted, so that, look at this, do this, you know, that sort of thing, which would be very beneficial for someone who's, who isn't experienced or, and we can ask your example, just said, you know, a long-term sub, or, um, something along those lines.
Great.
Alright.
Thank you for the update.
What is the price?
The, you've already paid or?
Yeah, we were, yeah, I forgot.
Yeah, it's just an update. Yeah, we don't have to make a motion on this, can we, sir?
Is civics for ninth grade?
Ninth and tenth.
I'm sorry, what was that question you?
Is civics for ninth grade?
Yes, but we skipped a year, we skipped this patch because we didn't have the Tier One Curriculum. We were just using, uh, we would have actually used just the standards and the framework, not just did the, because it is now state-related test.
Can you work with that for them?
I'm sorry. She was just asking about what the level of intensity, this is going to be the freshman level class, but we skipped civics this year because we didn't have the materials, and the ELC, the, the league test, is now going to be moving from U.S. History to civics, and I didn't think it was fair to our students, our teachers, or our district, to teach civics this year in the ninth grade when we didn't have what we needed to teach.
So we didn't teach civics?
Not this year, no. So, but this year, those kids, those students, they're gonna, will get it, yes, yes. Although, look, they have to get it, because this, this particular group of freshmen this year, they're required to do the civics in a course test, the league test.
Right.
They won't do U.S. History, they will do civics.
And the new grading system.
Yeah, and so I didn't think it was fair to them or to us to give them civics without the materials.
Can you give me, um, while you're here, a little bit of that evolution, uh, because I know there have been changes, it seems yearly, from seventh, eighth grade, U.S. History, Louisiana History, now we have civics. Actually, don't get me this, what are we gonna be teaching in seven, eighth, ninth time?
We're still, we're gonna be using the, the standards from, uh, the last set that was adopted. Um, and they, they did take different pieces of it and they put it over, uh, like, they took Louisiana History instead of doing it in isolation, they spread it out based on the time period that's being taught at that grade level. So, for example, if there's, um, when they're doing the, um, the time period in the seventeen hundreds, late seventeen hundreds of the American Revolution, then they would bring Louisiana as it applies to that during that time period. They talk about the Civil War, it'll be the Civil War, but then what's Louisiana's impact into the Civil War? So that's how they took Louisiana History and spread it out.
So kids aren't gonna have two years of Louisiana History anymore, right?
It's gonna be spread out, it's gonna be spread out, they're just wanting to make sure, Louisiana wanted to make sure that they knew the history, they discovered that they could split it over several years. To the fact of even at civics, there, there are units in civics, this is why it's been very difficult to find Tier One Curriculum for civics, because of the Louisiana standards that are embedded, a whole section of just Louisiana standard that would cover our, um, Native Americans to Louisiana, that's unique to Louisiana, uh, different parts of our government that's unique to Louisiana, like the Napoleonic Code, the Black laws, you know, different things like that. So they wanted to make sure that all of those were covered. Supreme Court cases, there's specific Louisiana, and so they wanted to make sure, the state wanted to make sure that those were taught, and so they just spread it out.
Great. Okay. One, two, three, four. Yeah, so we're gonna move on to the next item, and we're going on to E, Elektra.
Okay, Lexia, Core Five Power Renewal. This is our third year using Lexia, um, Core Five Power, and, uh, Lexia, we also have Lexia, which we have a little bit longer. We have Lexia English that is on our ELL students. And this is just a renewal, I think that the best way to talk about Lexia and the need for us to renew that particular contract is looking at the data, and you got a lot of pieces of data in your packet, but the most, what, Dr. Harris just passed you is the most current Lexia data, and if anyone in the audience that would like a copy of it, just raise your hand, it's good. You have to pass your copy of that Lexia data. But what I did was I showed you the district overall, um, Lexia data, and if you'll see, you have like a little bar, a bar, uh, graph, and then you have some data under it, it kinda shows you by grade level, where our student, how our students have performed. But what's most profound for me is when you look at the district as a whole, we started the year off with seventy-two percent of our students that were below grade level material, and, um, now, at this point, May first, we have eighteen percent that's below. A couple of years back, we were, and, and I was going into schools, and, um, principals, teachers alike, had serious concerns about our interventions, because what we were finding was the teachers were going teacher-paid teachers, they were going to all various different places to look for those things, to assist them with, uh, interventions for their students. So when this particular program came along, we, we, um, talked to a couple of districts that were using it, and as a matter of fact, watched how they're in negotiations with Lexia now, because they will be implementing Lexia in their schools on next year. And, um, the program, we brought literacy coaches in, we brought teachers and principals in to see the presentation. And openly, they thought this was, uh, what we had been looking for, and it has not disappointed. Um, in this data that I provided you, I did a district-wide data, where we always talk about those schools that we have our CIR schools, and I pulled some of those schools so that you could see the significant, um, data change with those schools being worked out, which at the beginning of the year had eighty percent of their students that were below grade level material, and now we're looking at thirty-two percent. At the beginning of the year, they had only one percent above grade level material, and now we're looking at twenty-four percent, nineteen percent in grade level, and forty-four now in grade level materials. And if you look at the next page, we have Bert Jones, uh, Thomas Jefferson, and Boyne Mill, and you see the same, same, uh, statistics because with Bert Jones, at the beginning of the year, eighty-one percent of the students were below, thirteen percent now. At the beginning of the year, zero above, and now we have fifty-four percent of those students that are above grade level material. So Lexia has been very, very instrumental in assisting us with providing our students with interventions. It also helps challenge our high-performing students. So I know that if you have a child, grandchild, niece, nephew in the district, you've heard about Lexia, because they are working on Lexia's school, some of them are working on Lexia's school, but it's just a phenomenal program that we would like to see, um, renewed in the district. And just a note, you do see the, um, the import for Lexi, uh, Lexia English does become, and I give the three-year option, but we do one year. They just put the three years on there, and I usually tell them with the Lexia Core Five Power, don't put it on there, but with English, uh, I'm usually not the one that deals with the English, that would be Dr. Harris dealing with English, but they put the three, but we always go opposite.
Can you give me three specific reasons how Lexia has helped with this increase specifically?
Grammar.
Sorry, Greg.
Grammar in what way?
Well, is it, is it, they haven't had as much.
You're talking about power.
Yeah, for secondary for the power up, um, the grammar has been a piece that has been missing. Uh, that's not really, not taught as much in, in the, in the vehicles. And so, so there were those gaps there, and so this is helping to provide those gaps, uh, especially in, in that.
How does it build gaps?
It's the lessons that are, that are, that are part of the program.
Okay.
And then the resources that are provided within the program that teachers can use to do individual interventions with students if they're struggling with a particular skill.
So at some level, does it depend on the teacher, whether or not they really, uh, delve into Lexia to the degree that would help with that?
Correct, not, not necessarily, okay?
So, at the beginning of the school year, students take a placement test, and wherever they place, whether I'm a fifth grader and I tested and I placed on third grade, the program starts me at that level at whatever skill deficits I have, and I work my way through it. And if there becomes a time when I'm struggling, the system will notify the teacher and say, hey, there's a lesson for this particular baby, like, we're doing our part, but he's, he or she is still struggling. Use this lesson plan, teach this lesson to this particular child, this particular group of kids, and they should continue on.
And if I may, that, that was one of the reasons that we picked Lexia originally, or why, why it was brought to us, is because it was individual, it was so individualized plans and tracking of the learning, which was something that we didn't have prior.
So we've had a lot of good experiences with it, it sounds like, right? So what kind of discounts would we get if we went from a one-year to, say, a three-year?
We're paying for it with Title One.
Okay.
Title One is year-to-year.
Okay, so we're not paying for it, really, I mean, it's coming out of Title One that.
But we can't do like a multiple year, we can't have a multiple year, yeah, we can't have a multi-year contract with pedagogy with Title One.
Something that works.
Does that make sense? Can we talk for a bit, how we did?
So if I may, I have, I have a question, because the statistics are good, I obviously have a concern about Thomas Jefferson or Bert, because they're, they're not tracking with that same, um, it's better, it's, it's good, but, but here's my question. Are, are we tracking from year to year, because if, if I, how long ago did we implement Lexia?
Uh, this is about third, third, it's not third.
So if I've got kids coming in with that much deficit, that concerns me. If they had Lexia last year, why are we coming in so far below grade level at the beginning of the year? So I would expect to see that if we hadn't had Lexia before.
Yes, um, I mean, for me, Dr. Dr. is dying at every attempt.
That's my, that's my word, so, um, students in third through third and up, when they take the placement test, because they are kids, they click, 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 click. And because we're clicking and we're not actually trying, they may get placed on a kindergarten level, and now they have to make up all of that, and that's the issue, not only with a Jefferson, if we were to give you Sally Hall's data, it looks the exact same way. However, Dibble's, can I go there? Um, Dibble's, uh, we recently did our end-of-the-year Dibble's data, and both Jefferson, seventy-six percent of their students' benchmark, and Sally, I think it's eighty-two. So, a lot of that is just the kids just clicked in it again, and because they clicked.
I got a hard time, I got a hard time, I mean, accepting that, I'm sure it occurs.
Can I finish my, my question? My, my reason for bringing up Thomas Jefferson is looking at the data when you look at this start, yeah, yeah, they're, we're soft at the start. But when I look at current, we're still sitting at forty percent below grade level. So that's where my concern is that.
We started with nine.
Right, but we have, we started with eighty at Bert Jones and a thirteen, that, that's a big difference there, and, and so obviously, I'm sure you all are looking at what's going on there, what's going with our students, how can we be providing better services there? But I, but I do understand, like, maybe there's the click, click, click happening, maybe? But then, then what you're telling me is Lexia isn't really that helpful.
Well, another thing.
I mean, what, well, hold up, hold up, oh, hold on. So we gotta be careful about what message we're giving here, because if we're gonna be dismissive about test results and saying kids are just clicking, then you can't provide them these, you can't provide them these graphs, because then I'm saying, oh, this is junk, this is just garbage. No, because you're telling me, these, the statistics are important, we're spending, you know, lots of money on this programming. So I wanna know that we're doing accuracy of the testing, so that when we're looking at data, we are seeing that improvement, we're not seeing some randomized, you know, button pushing. But again, also, we need to be assessing from year to year and following core cohorts, and I don't, I don't have that data in front of me to say, this third grader, when they went to fourth, dropped it? Is it because, and this goes to my next, our next two items, looking at our summer programming, after-school programming, if kids are losing that much grade level advancement over the course of nine weeks, we got, we got bigger, fish and fry, and Lexia's not doing its job, a kid can't retain what they learned from, you know, nine weeks later. And again, they're going to a different grade, but still, they shouldn't be assessing that low the next year. Do you, do you hear where I'm, where I'm coming from on this and what my concern is?
Yeah.
Sam? Yeah, I'm gonna follow him, click, 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 I got a problem with that, because that's a teacher situation, not motivating students and, and, and incenting them to do well, and I know the teacher can't, I, I know the teacher can't control everything. But I mean, this, that's getting into a really fun, because, you know, I was a kid, I didn't wanna just, I, I wanted to do well with tests, there was motivation to do well, right? And I realized if you're not getting it at home, which is the case a lot of times with certain kids, but still, man, our teachers have got to really be able to inspire the kids to do their best and not just click, 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 and if it happens, let's intervene the year after it happens, say, look, you need to understand, you can't just, you know, that's, I mean, that's coaching, that's motivating. And, and I, teachers are expected to be miracle workers, I get it, I, I married one, okay? But, at the same time, man, that's, I don't know.
And the only thing I wanted to add was, when we look at the Jefferson, we're talking about third through sixth grade, and when we look at the other sites, we're talking about K to sixth grade. And typically, our lower grades perform better with Lexia, simply because teachers have the time to put into Lexia, where at our third, our testing grades are focusing on so many other things that, that, the testing, that they don't have the time to do Lexia like our lower grades. So that has a little bit to do with the Jefferson, the Sally Hall, because the third, it's great, uh, configuration, so.
Does Lexia go up to junior high and high school?
Yeah, it is powerful.
Do students have, is there an ability to completely clip out of having to use Lexia for very high-achieving students?
Yeah, they can, they can show, they can show of the.
So they can't clip out, they have to finish?
Yeah, they have to finish.
Okay. I'm just saying, I've heard complaints from some of the higher grades of, of, not just my own kids, I don't know, not saying they're the smartest, and they like to complain a lot, I do understand that, but from other students as well, is that it's, it, it's menial compared to the, the, the stuff that they're getting in their classrooms and the, the other work that they're doing, and it's just distracting, because it's time suck, taking away from what they're really learning, and so that's where I'm looking at. Maybe, if we can just look into, you know, is there, when you have somebody who is a high-achieving, so you've got a four-point-oh sophomore in high school, they're good at AP, you're talented, gifted, all these classes, and, and Lexia only goes up to a certain level, do we need to keep them doing Lexia, or is that just busy work at that point?
No, where you see that through the eighth grade, we're using power up up through eighth grade to cover these skills, but then the ninth graders that are required to have remediation because they didn't pass the state test in eighth grade, they're doing power, they're the only ones in high schools that are doing it.
Okay.
Just the students that are even reading, and that's, that's coming with the state test in eighth grade. Because we're required to, we're required to provide some kind of remediation.
Sure, yeah, yeah, remediation.
And like I say, these, like I mentioned earlier, what Lexia does is it, it's taking care of gaps and skills that they're not getting, even, even for the highest-level student, they're not getting as much grammar, they're not getting such word study as they would, as you would think they would be getting. The comprehension, if you'll notice over the, since we've been using Lexia, our comprehension's been really good, but that's because we've been spending a lot of our efforts the last few years on comprehension. But we then let other skills lie behind, and Lexia has shown us that that's where we need interventions.
Well, I, I would recommend this for approval, I think what I'd like to do is that year-to-year, like, let's really figure out, I mean, I know this is an age-old question, this is, I struggle with that, that's, that summer slide, but let, let's figure out what, how can Lexia be helping us better with that year-to-year slum, slide, or we'll call that.
Are you saying option one, when you say year-to-year, or do you?
Yeah, it's Title One, we can only do one year.
Got you. I said, that's motion.
I don't think I agree.
Okay, I said.
Okay. Question, Mr. Berry?
I was just gonna ask, what we're seeing is overall, like, the, um, school report, is it possible to get a breakdown by grade on how well these students are doing?
Thank you, thank you, alright, we have a motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Berry, all in favor. Okay, in post, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, um, we have after-school programming. I, um, I asked just to go over our status of after-school tutoring as well, at, or any programming, really, and then our summer programming. I, I do understand that we, uh, we have some things going on tonight that people are trying to get to. So unless the committee members have any pressing questions right now, um, I do have one question regarding summer programming. Um, it was brought to my attention that we are not providing transportation to all schools offering summer programming, is that correct?
Second year, we're not offering to second year.
So no, no junior high or high school? Okay, why did we make that decision?
In speaking with, um, and Mr. Mayhaw, I'm going to come up and add because he talks with the secondary, speaking with secondary teachers as well as administrators, they feel like there needs to be some skill in the game. We're not off, we're not requiring students to pay for summer. So if they're, if, so if parents are having to bring students to schools for these programs, then hopefully they will require students to come to these programs and do the work that they need to do. And so that was kind of the discussion that we kind of had with students coming, parents, and students from white. Just had some skill in the game with these programs.
So I'm a single mom, I work certain hours, I can't get my, my kid to, to Neville Junior. What are my options?
If I, Mr. Mayhaw, your opinion, because it's my understanding that before ESRA, we didn't provide transportation. ESRA allowed us for monthly, that now we have, don't have that funding, but we have to take a step a little bit. And it's my understanding that prior to ESRA funding, we did not provide transportation for secondary summer program.
And they also had to pay a hundred and fifty dollars or flash in order to even attend summer school.
Or full.
So they, they found a way to get there and they found a way to pay that money. And so we were just trying, in just in our.
I got a bunch of friends.
And in our discussions about, you know, when we were planning for, when we were planning for the summer, that was one of the things, because we need that money, it was gone, we were not charging you. Now, that's a, it's a pleasure of the.
And you guys also know so many districts that don't even offer summer opportunities as well. Remember, our kids did have it to go to school year, and we're offering them this opportunity in the summer.
And are we offering it every elementary school?
The ele, the element, the summer program of elementary will focus on the third grade retention group. And so there will be, I'll leave the numbers on, um, the, that, this, the summary of the, the number as of right now. They will retest on day twenty, that number will go down slightly. But these are the students that right now will be participating in some program that's outside of now Twenty First Century, which Twenty First Century summer sites are Carver, Cypress Point, and Lordy's Shell. And to be in line with the work that we're doing with the third grade retention, uh, Twenty First Century will only be focusing on second, third, and fourth grade students.
So board members, here's my thing, I'm, you know, I'm looking at the Lexia staff, we're looking at that information, looking at summer program, we're talking about summer slide. I, I see a school here, uh, that's still got forty percent below grade level. And, and are we offering summer programming for these students regardless of whether, you know, I don't know what grades these are. So, I mean, it's obviously not just the third grade. So this is what I'm saying, like, I think as a board, we need to look at what, is this enough? Are we doing enough for these students who aren't even at grade level at the end of this grade? Are we making sure we've got summer programming for them to get them to grade level to the next year? For this forty percent of, of this elementary school is not a grade level.
Yeah, they've kept the elementary programs up, up to two elementary schools.
And elementary school, well, all schools have the option to put a title fund in their title budget if they wanted to have summer program. And I don't think any of them.
So, uh, at the, when I did our, uh, these assessments for all elementary schools, junior highs and high schools, they were advised due to the ending of ESRA to revise their budgets and allocate funding for summer school to include for our secondaries busing for summer. They made the decision with their funds to not do that. Title cannot also give the schools money and compensate for what they've not allocated their money for.
Okay, so Superintendent, I want to direct this to you because ultimately, but stops you in terms of our school's achievements, our student achievement. I mean, are we satisfied with where we're at with our, I know, I understand funds are limited, but I'm looking at this, this achievement. And I, I mean, I'm going to keep going back to Thomas Jefferson because this one really concerns me. This is a standout low achieving, uh, scores we have sitting in front of us. And I know this is just one measure, but I want to make sure we're really.
All we satisfied with where we're at, no, but all we, all we.
With what we're offering.
Pleased with the direction we're going compared to where we have been. And I think we're, we're moving absolutely in the right direction. Uh, and, and if, if we can, we can look at, we can, we can put a decent look in, looks at those different campuses that are extremely low. Uh, and we, we can revisit that and add to those campuses.
Because it's really, I mean, I, the principals come and go. This is not about the principal, this is about the student who's going to have to live with low achievement the rest of their lives because we just were like, well, and I don't want to have that, well, sorry. I, I mean, I want to make sure we're doing everything we can for these students. We have enough money coming into our district, and we want to make sure that we're actually capturing, we can, we can, you know, employ all these programs, but if we're not looking at that forty percent that aren't at grade level and getting them to grade level by the time they get to the next grade, then we're not doing our job. So I, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm just one member of the board, but I'm, I'm concerned about, and again, this is just one measure, one, one school. It's not all the schools, it's not all the kids, it's not all the grade levels. I do understand that, and I hope you understand where I'm coming from. I know you guys care about the kids, do you? And I know everybody's trying to stay within budgets, which I very much appreciate. Um, but we as a board need to know what are we missing and what we need to be doing better. What do you need from us to capture these kids so we're not losing them? So that, that's just my plea, and, and hopefully you guys understand I'm coming from a, a place of love, not, not criticism. Um, because I know you guys are working with what you've got, but just, just keep that in consideration. Thank you for the answer about transportation, I do understand that, and it, and it's true, people can ask for help if they need to get a kid there. If, if it really matters to them, they'll get.
Now, just to add on the after-school tutoring program, we understand that our board gives you a detailed report on where we are because that is significant as we record to know what we need to do as forth actually to them, where it's working, where it's not. But at the beginning of this year's programming, we opted not to do, um, our. Oh, not that, not that. And so those were the types of things we needed to do a pre-posed test so that we could effectively see where we are. And that we did, we're going to have to now look at our league data and then compare it to where the students were at the year of last year to where they were this year. And I come to you more as we feel the forthcoming as to each school and what that team is, or how to thank the youth in the public. We need to pay more back.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so we kind of combined F and G there, Ms. Cross, or you?
Yes, I do have a, a question that's staggering. Um, first of all, we're talking about Jefferson, but we've got to go, I would encourage the board to go look at Clara Hall. That's where your children are coming from and to see what those test scores look like. We, we just done Dibbles. The other thing is with your budget, you, the board, need to get with the superintendent and with your department heads and look at your budget. Certainly we know ESRA funds are not fair, but we've got plenty of money coming into this district. And, you know, all you've got to do is go online and look at where your federal programs are, look at your general fund, if you get that. And that is your primary objective or directive is to look at finances and help to work with its staff who is trying their best to address the needs of.
And I'm going, I'm going to keep us on track with our agenda here. Any other questions specific to after-school tutoring or summer school program?
I would ask a question about transportation because, because in those impala's era, those children have to walk to school. I saw, I, I worked the summer where the high school had transportation, but the junior high didn't. And so those kids have to work, uh, walk at least two to three miles to get to their school. So to me, transportation is very important for those.
We're talking about unfunded summer school program that's free, so I want to keep that specific. And, and explain the rationale for that, and there, there are options. And, and honestly, as a parent, if I had a significant problem, my kid really needed to be there, I'd be at the school talking to the principal saying, I need your help. Help me figure out how to get my kid there. So there is an onus, there is an onus on parents. Schools cannot do everything, they can't do everything. Parents, the guardians need to be part of that solution, I hear what you're saying, but they've got to be communicating. So we're, we're going to leave that to the schools and the parents to, to take on that responsibility and ensure. I just wanted to make sure we had an open conversation about that so people are on notice that if their parent or guardian of a kid needs to get there, it's their responsibility to figure out how to get them. Okay, now here we are. I've got to adjourn, but I'm really trying to get people out. If you have other questions, you can send us emails.
Make motion for adjournment?
Got a motion for adjournment? Uh, and I've got a second, all in favor? I'm going to post, Ms. Turner, we're going to move directly into insurance.